Good evening, everyone. Today is May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Welcome. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely as well as on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones, please, uh, when not speaking, and this is to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name every time you speak so that the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. This is critical given the number of remote participants and its current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Please be sure that when you do speak that you're speaking clearly into your microphone as to ensure that all your comments are heard and an accurate record can be made. I will now call this meeting to order. Clerk, can you please announce the meeting and give us our roll call?
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Garner. You're hereby notified that I've called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted in a hybrid format on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at five P M for a budget workshop. Roll call. Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Stites.
Davis.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Garner.
Here. Thank you, clerk. Uh, again, this is a meeting. Um, it's a scheduled budget workshop. I'll now turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. David Johnston, and he will lead the meeting from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, start these budget workshops, uh, with the, uh, with the commission. Uh, we're going to be, uh, starting it with, uh, reminding us where we get our money. It's the revenue sources that make up both the city and county budget and, uh, all the levy funds. And, uh, as always, we will have, um, Reggie, our staff, to, uh, lead us through this presentation. Reggie?
Thank you, David. I'm going to turn it over to Debbie Johnsher, our interim CFO. She's going to get us started off.
Hey, Mayor, commissioners, uh, Debbie Johnsher, uh, interim CFO. So as I said, I'm going to start off the presentation. We are, we are going to be showing, um, a long-range forecast for all of our funds, um, and kind of going through what revenue sources those are and if they are restricted, um, by either state statute or ordinance that, that, uh, the unified government has, um. So we'll be talking about and then showing you what the, what the forecast looks like out through two thousand and twenty-eight on each of the funds. So we're going to start out, uh, just showing what funds we have. So we ha- even though we are a unified government, um, uh, consolidated city-county, we still do, um, have funds that are specifically for the city and the county, and we do track all of those funds separately. So just wanted to note, uh, this is a listing of all the funds on the county side. There are fifteen different funds. We have eight tax levy funds, and these are, uh, funds that are supported with property tax revenues. Two of those funds are the general fund, the county general fund, and the Parks and Rec general fund, as well as eight other, or six other tax levy funds. Um, we have seven special revenue funds, um, that are also included. Special revenue funds are revenues where the sources are restricted for specific purposes. Uh, did I just, I just want to note that the general fund, um, general funds are the primary operating funds and cover most of the operating, uh, uh, revenues and expenditures for the government and would account for any, um, sources that are not in, listed in any of the other funds. So the next sheet is, uh, Kansas City, Kansas Funds. Uh, we have sixteen funds on the city side. Um, once again, we have, uh, we only have two tax levy funds on the city side. That would be the city general fund and the city bond and interest fund. We also have seven special revenue funds on the city side, uh, as well as six enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are self-supporting funds that charge a fee, um, to provide the services. Um, and then we also have the, uh, one fiduciary fund, which is usually for assets that are held in trust, and that's the environmental trust fund. So this next slide just kind of shows the assumptions that we've built into our forecast. Um, on the revenue side, since we don't have final valuations yet from the clerk's office, those will be in, um, those are, um, set to be, uh, finalized by June fifteenth. But for now, we are, for property tax revenues, we are assuming a fifteen percent growth for two thousand and twenty-four, a six percent in two thousand and twenty-five, and then out through two thousand and twenty-eight, we're looking at four percent. Um, sales tax, liquor tax, and the transient guest tax. Um, as we all know, sales tax is a little more volatile and it's sensitive to economic conditions, so we tend to be a little more conservative with our estimates there. So we're projecting two point nine percent growth in two thousand and twenty-four, and then two percent, uh, going outward. And charges for service, we kind of look at that on a case-by-case basis depending on what kind of contract, um, or service we might have. On the expenditures, um, personnel would include all union contracts that have been approved, uh, going forward, as well as we, uh, do have a projected vacancy built into, into that trend. Um, operating expenses, we've estimated a three percent growth based on two thousand and twenty-two actuals, and the capital is based on what we currently have in the capital schedule.
Ms. Markley?
So for personnel, th- there is no raise for non-union folks figured in as an assumption?
There is.
Okay. And, and do we know that percentage?
Or percent?
Four percent. We have figured in for everybody.
And everyone.
Thank you.
And that's all fourteen unions.
Okay.
Ms. Sherman, Karen?
And regarding personnel again, you s- are you projecting that current, um, authorized but unfilled positions will stay status quo? That is unfilled?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So what?
Thank you. Uh, is there a reason why we're not going to fill them? And then what are we doing with the money that we would have paid somebody if they'd have been here?
So we, we, we do have, uh, overtime that happens with positions that aren't filled right now. And so once, uh, we fill those position, overtime, uh, will free up money to fill positions.
So, so we do plan on filling the positions?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Burrows?
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, sales tax is projected to two point nine and two percent on out. Uh, I believe that's what you s- you stated, Debbie. Ken, uh, do we know what the sales tax has been for the last three years as a moving average?
Um, I don't.
We, we don't have that number right now.
Uh, I, I just remember two years ago, it was a five percent, and we took a pretty conservative approach with that.
Right.
And two point nine seems, you know, even more conservative. So I don't mind being conservative, trust me. I just don't want to also, uh, chip away, uh, an opportunity to recognize income that we may have and not having to be able to look at it in the budget.
Right. And I think last year we did include a five percent, and that was based on how we were trending, um, earlier in the year. Um, I don't know if I'm gonna probably let Reggie, uh, answer on what they've, what they've looked at for this year so far.
So, so based on, uh, we came up with two point nine percent just based on economic factors that are going on. There have been some layoffs in the area. Um, and we have noticed where spending is not being as high in, in some retail service areas. So that's what we based our two point nine percent on.
Okay. I, I would encourage us to, uh, maybe look at what the State Department of Revenue took in, uh, in sales tax statewide. I think they blew past their projected budgets too. And I, I don't mind a conservative approach, but two point nine just kind of sticks out, you know, uh, to me. That's all. Thank you.
And we can certainly look at that and make adjustments, um, to our forecast.
Talking a lot of money there, that, uh, any money that we can keep in the first. Now.
Go ahead, David.
Just gonna say, I was going to turn it over to Reginald Lindsay to talk about the tax levy funds.
Now, we're going to go through our tax levy funds, and we're going to start out, um, looking at the county side of things, and then we'll jump into the city. But we can see, uh, for Wyandotte County tax levy funds, uh, we have the county general fund, Parks and Rec Fund, county bond and interest, aging elections, development disability, health department, mental health, ki- and county bond and interest. Then on the city side, um, there are two tax levy funds, that being the city general fund and the city bond and interest fund. So the first fund we're jumping into is the county general fund. Um, so basically here in this fund, uh, we can kind of see, looking at the chart, uh, two thousand and twenty-two estimated actuals that we ended the year, uh, we ended up bringing in one point two million more dollars in revenues than expenditures that we spent. Uh, net left a set of fund balance of like twenty-four percent. As we move over, uh, into two thousand and twenty-three's amended budget, we can see that, um, we have like a three point six million dollar, uh, structural deficit there where we brought in or spent more, uh, eighty-one, eighty-one million dollars in expenses, and we had seventy-seven million dollars go out, and then dropped our fund balance down to almost eighteen percent. And, uh, as we look into two thousand and twenty-four, we can see that we have, um, sh- our, our structural imbalance is, is like two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and that does drop our fund balance down to around seventeen percent, which leaves us in pretty good shape. And as we look out into the, the years going out to two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven, and two thousand and twenty-eight, we can see the fund balance does gradually start to go up each year. So one of the things that's also within this fund is, last year during the budget process, uh, we did commit to putting in a, a mill for sci-fi, which is our county infrastructure fund for financing. And what that does is provide funding for Banner Springs, Edwardsville, and the city of Kansas City, Kansas, uh, for funding for infrastructure needs. Uh, so we can see in two thousand and twenty-four, we're committing that mill will have one point eight million dollars, and it does grow each year. And so those numbers are, uh, factored in to, to these numbers, so the revenues that we have going, going out and the expenses that we do have going in into the out years reflect those numbers. Also, within the fund, um, there are six hundred and seventy-six F T Es that are funded from here.
This next fund is the, uh, county bond and interest fund. Um, the primary revenue source for this fund is, uh, property tax, the property tax levy. Um, funds are restricted for the payment of principal and interest on bonds. Um, and just to note that once the fu- once the money comes into this fund, the only way that it can be taken out if it's not used for the payment of principal and interest on debt, um, would be that all outstanding, um, debt issuances have to be retired. So, and that is by state statute, uh, and that's both for the city and the county. So once the, once the funds are in here, they stay in here to pay for, um, until all outstanding debt is retired. Um. So I just wanted to note here, um, we have, uh, this fund, uh, actually has a pretty good fund balance going out to two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we do have a little bit of a structural imbalance, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, but we're still ending with a, a reserve, uh, percentage of about thirty-seven percent. Um, going into two thousand and twenty-three and out, uh, it is structurally balanced. Uh, we do have, um, as I said, the re- the primary source of revenue is the property tax. Um, there is also a transfer from the county general fund of one point five million that goes towards the debt service on the jet, the juvenile, uh, justice facility. When, when that facility was built and we issued the bonds, uh, there was a commitment, um, that savings due to farmouts in the county general fund would go, uh, toward the payment of that debt. So we do have that transfer built into the revenues. Um. There's also other revenues that are included within there. Uh, BPU does pay a portion of the emergency radio project debt that was issued back in two thousand and thirteen. So that's also coming in here, uh, into this fund. Um, but as you can see, we projected out our, the fund balance grows, uh, to about five point three million by two thousand and twenty-eight.
Current fund that we're looking at is our aging fund, and what it does is provide funding for service programs for the elderly throughout the county. And looking at the budget and for our two thousand and twenty-two actuals, uh, we had one point five million dollars in expenses go out, but we did have two million dollars of revenues come in. So this fund is, is structurally balanced in two thousand and twenty-two, and as we move over into two thousand and twenty-three, there is a one hundred thousand dollar structural imbalance where, uh, this, we have one hundred thousand dollars less, um, revenues coming in as it's compared to expenditures. But as we look out over the years, uh, going out to two thousand and twenty-four, all the way out to two thousand and twenty-eight, we can see this fund has a a, a healthy fund balance, where, uh, some years we have like a sixty percent, sixty-eight percent fund balance in two thousand and twenty-four. By the time we get out to two thousand and twenty-eight, we have a hundred and eleven percent fund balance. So one of the things we, we, that we could look at with having a healthy fund balance like this is we could look at increasing services or looking at shifting mills or also cutting a, a portion of the mills. Um, so one of the things that this fund does, it employs nineteen employees, and that's across both aging and transit. And, and one thi- well, last week we had a meeting regarding the BPU pilot. Uh, one thing that we could look at here is providing, um, pr- providing a providing some type of service where, uh, we can do a utility rebate across the county, uh, for uh, for all citizens. And so that would include Kansas City, Kansas, Banner Springs, and Edwardsville. Uh, so the citizen in Edwardsville and Banner Springs, it would not be like a utility rebate for BPU, but with their electric company there, which I know some places is, it's evergy. Current fund we're looking at is a consolidated parks fund, and so basically what's funded here from here are basically our programming and services for our parks, uh, and also improvement to, to our park and recreation, uh, system that we have across the county and the city. So one of the things that we can see here is that in two thousand and twenty-two, our estimated actuals, we ended up having seven point one million dollars in expenses going out, and we had seven point four, um, million dollars in revenues coming in. So we were structurally balanced here in the tuna. We, um, had two hundred and sixty thousand more dollars of revenues, um, that came in over expenses. We can see we have a thirty-two percent fund balance. And as we move into, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three amended budget, we do end up spend, we e- we estimate that we will spend more in revenues and expenditures that we're pu- pulling in of almost two hundred thousand dollars. But as we move into two thousand and twenty-four and going out to two thousand and twenty-eight, we, and in all the years, we have more revenue coming in than expenditures going out. Um, and our fund balance, uh, in two thousand and twenty-eight does go up to thirty percent. So we do have a healthy fund balance here. We have eighty employees that are paid from this fund. And some of the things that we consider here, also with the healthy fund balances, um, looking at increasing services or shifting the mill, or maybe even cutting the mill.
We have a question. Christian Ramirez?
Mr. Mayor, um, just for clarification, for the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight, the net change in fund balance, is that supposed to be black or red?
Uh, it should be black.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Uh, the fund that we're looking at right now is development disabilities, and with this provides, uh, services to the, uh, the disabled clients across the county, provides vocational services, uh, to help those clients gain wage and earning job skills, and then also provide services that helps those individuals learn independent learning. So looking at the two thousand and twenty-two estimated actuals for this fund, we had four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that was spent. We had total revenues come in of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and our fund balance ends up being like a hundred and fifteen percent for this fund. Uh, one of the things I'd like to share, historically with this fund, back in two thousand and nineteen, we did, uh, move a portion of the mill to the health department. So there's a mill over there, uh, in, in, over in the health department. It was once in development disabilities. And at that point in time, when development disabilities had that mill shifted, it, it did kind of make their fund, uh, structurally imbalanced, but as the excess value has gone up over a few years, they, they have been able to realize more funding that is coming in to make this fund, um, more healthy than it has been in the past. But the department was being frugal and not spending money. But there is a possibility, uh, with having more fund balance, that we can improve like, um, services here or not, not improve, but increase the services that are here. Or we could look at shifting a mill or cutting, cutting a mill here. And it wouldn't be a whole mill, it'd be a percentage of the mill. Also, just kind of give some of the, um, details on the fund that are within that department, there are three F T Es that are paid from, from this, this development disability mill levy, and then they have three, three employees that are paid from their grant. Next fund is our elections fund, uh, and this, this fund provides, is, has a mill assigned to provide services for elections that happen all across the county. And then we can see in two thousand and twenty-two, um, estimated actuals that happened where we have one point four million dollars in expenses go out, and we have one point five million dollars in revenues, um, ended up coming in. So the structural, um, sh- they were structurally, uh, balanced here, where you ended up having forty-one thousand dollars more in revenues coming in. And we see their fund balance is twenty, twenty percent. And then as we get out to, um, two thousand and twenty-eight, their fund balance does go up to thirty-five percent. Also, there are twenty employees paid from, from this fund. Current fund that we're looking at is, uh, the health, health levy fund, which provides funds to assist in carrying out health laws, rules, and regulations across the county, and provides for capital expenditures for ca- county health purposes. So in two thousand and twenty-two, um, we did bring, bring in three point seven million dollars in revenues, but we did have four point one million dollars in expenses go out, which, uh, we ended up being structurally imbalanced by three hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, but we s- still do have like a forty-one percent fund balance. The trajectory for this fund is we, we look out into the years, uh, we, we are spending more money, um, and we have revenues coming in. We do have like oh, fund balance like in two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, but that fund balance is, is going down each year. So by the time we get out to two thousand and twenty-eight, that fund balance does drop to four percent. Um, in this health levy fund, we have thirty-nine employees that is, that are paid from it. And the health department also has seventy-nine employees that are paid from, from grants, which equal one hundred and eighteen employees within that fund or within that department. But within this fund, there are thirty-nine employees. We also have the mental health fund, uh, which has a, a levy attached to it. And the purpose of this is to contract services out with nonprofit corporations to provide either mental services or services to clients with mental health needs. Uh, and we do contract out with behavioral health for the, for this contract. Uh, the amount of the contract, uh, that gets paid from this mill is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And there's also a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that comes from the county general fund, or a total of nine hundred thousand dollars a year. So we see in two thousand and twenty-two, the estimate, uh, estimated actuals that went out were seven hundred and eight thousand dollars in expenses, revenues of seven hundred and four thousand dollars. And we have a very minimal structural imbalance of three thousand dollars. Have a cash ending fund balance of seventy-four thousand dollars, which is ten percent. And we can see as we go out to the years, um, twenty twenty-three, we do end up, uh, spending fifty-five thousand dollars more in revenues we c- we have coming in and try, does drop our fund balance. But as we go out, we see the fund balance does, by the time we get to two thousand and twenty-eight, go up to eighty percent. Now we're going to look at the two tax levy funds that are over in the city general fund. Uh, we're going to start out with the city, city general fund. So city general fund, um, it, it, it does, it does include, uh, F T Es and the amount of one thousand seven, seventy-three. Um, three hundred and sixty-nine of those are for the police department sworn, and then four hundred and forty-three of those are for, uh, fire departments sworn. And we can see estimated actuals in two thousand and twenty-two, we ended up spending a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. And we had a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in revenues that we collected. So our structural imbalance was about one point six million dollars, even though, uh, we did, uh, revenues did outpace expenditures over two thousand and twenty-two, we still have a twenty-six percent fund balance. As we move over into two thousand and twenty-three, uh, we can see that we are still outpacing as far as expenditures going out with revenues, uh, in, in, in the tune of, uh, almost six million dollars. So some of the things that are built into there, uh, last year we did reopen a Fairfax, uh, fire station. So that number is built in there. And then we also have, uh, safer grand employees, uh, in the fire department that will be rolling back into the city general fund that are built in here. And then we also have like contractual agreements that are built in here also, which does kind of push, push the numbers up going out into, to the future. So we can see, uh, when we get out to two thousand and twenty-six, we have a hundred and, um, ninety-six million dollars going out, and the forecast is a hundred and seventy-one million dollars. Also, in two thousand and twenty-three, I will note that, um, we did start a enterprise fund for our solid waste. So we had about ten million dollars come out of this fund, and it was moved into an enterprise fund.
Next one we're going to look at is the city bond and interest fund. This fund is also mainly, mainly funded with property tax levies, property tax levy, solely for the payment of principal and interest on bonds, just like the county debt service fund. So on this fund, you can see in, in two thousand and twenty-two, we're estimating an ending fund balance of about nine point nine million. So we were slightly more in expenses than we had in revenues. But going out in the future years, this, this fund does accumulate some additional fund balance. Other revenues that are included here, there is a BPU portion that pays for some utility improvements that were included with the road project a couple of years ago. So they are paying a portion of that debt. We also, we fund all of the, currently, all of the debt is funded with general obligation bonds. And so the, any debt that's issued for the enterprise funds, those enterprise funds are paying their debt. And so there is a transfer of revenue from those funds to the bond and interest fund to pay for their debt. Transfers currently amount to about thirteen million of the revenue. So they are, they are paying for their own debt. Did want to note here, you do see that, you know, we accumulate to a balance of about nineteen million in two thousand and twenty-eight. Did just want to remind that one thing we do not have built in here currently is the grant match for the Kansas Avenue Bridge replacement that was approved. If, if that grant is awarded, there was the potential for about thirty million for the grant match. So I don't have that built in here yet. But that would obviously affect the fund balance going forward. And I think the projections were maybe, starting in two thousand and twenty-five, we would, we would have that debt issuance. So however, it would be, it would be, I think, staggered over a couple of years. So, but I'll, I'll be working on that projection to make sure we get that included.
Thank you. Commissioner Burroughs has a question.
Debbie, could you explain the, what was the one point two million that busted our budget? That got us over budget? Was there something specifically that happened in twenty-two that cost us the one point two million?
That was budgeted. That's the, that you're looking at the two thousand and twenty-two amended budget.
Yes.
You know that every year we build in about a million in revenues, in reserves for that fund. So that probably a million of that was related to the revenues that we built in. Because most of the expenses are debt service on bonds that we currently have. So we, that, that's pretty much a fixed number that we know. But we do build in about a million in the event that something should come up during the year where we would need to pay something on debt service.
Great, thank you.
So that the actual amount ended about a hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-three thousand over budget.
So the million dollars is extra carrying?
Right, a, a reserve that we build in each year.
So is that built into the reserve moving forward in every one of those projections?
I believe it, I believe it should be, yes.
Because I look at, I'm looking at twenty-three and twenty-four, and they're pretty stagnant.
Yeah, it should be, it should be built in there. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to move into Wyandotte County Special Revenue Funds. Our first fund we're going to look at is the Clerks Technology Fund. And the purpose of this fund is to acquire equipment and technology service for storing, recording, archiving and retrieving and maintaining and handling of data recorded and stored and generated in, in, in particular offices. And this is particularly for the Clerks Fund. The revenue for this comes from filing of deeds. And so we can see that two thousand and twenty-two estimated actuals, where we had expenses go out of fifty-one thousand dollars and had revenues come in of forty-eight thousand dollars. And as we go out into future years, we can see where fund balance does stay pretty stable. Where in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a hundred and sixty-five percent fund balance and a hundred and eighty-four percent twenty-two. When we get out to two thousand and twenty-eight, there's a hundred and nineteen percent unbalanced. There are two other funds that are similar to this, that being the Treasurers Technology Fund and the Registered Deeds Technology Fund. I do know the three departments are eyeing a new software that is definitely needed for the whole organization than as the land management systems that we use across the three, three departments. And also where appraiser is involved in that. So the fund balance is, that we do see they're brilliant, being built up to help purchase that software sometime in the future. Next fund is the Court Trustee Fund. And the purpose of this fund is to collect child support payments within the county. That's basically where they make their revenues from. So we could see that in two thousand and twenty-two, estimated actuals were, were court trustee. We had four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in revenues or four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in expenses that went out. We had three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of revenues that came in. So we did have a structural imbalance here of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We can kind of see that they do have a pretty healthy fund balance of seventy-eight percent in two thousand and twenty-two. And as we go into the years, we can see next year, we're estimating a fund balance of forty-six percent. By the time we get out to two thousand and twenty-eight, it's about a seven point six percent fund balance. This particular fund does have eight and a half employees that, that are paid, that depend on their paychecks from here. Next fund is our jail commissary fund. This is a fund that's based in the sheriff's department and the revenue source are canteen funds, where items are bought and resold to, to inmates. So we can see in two thousand and twenty-two, estimated actuals were a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Revenues and total expenses were twenty-seven thousand dollars. They did have a, a payback from a vendor that owed some money from, from, from a few years ago. They paid into this. That's why we have over a hundred thousand dollars more in revenue that came in. But we could see in outer years, we still project like sixty thousand dollars to come in each year. So the fund balance here is, is pretty healthy. And the, this fund, I mean, is, is strictly for canteen funds for inmates in the sheriff's department. So we, here we are. So we have the Registered Deeds Fund, which is very similar to the Clerks Technology Fund that we did cover a couple of slides back. And revenues here come from filing the deeds. And it does have a pretty hefty fund balance between the three departments of clerk and registered deeds and also treasurer. They are looking to buy a new land management system, and the appraiser is also involved in that. So that's what the fund balance being built up here is for. And here's the Treasurers Technology Fund. And again, the, the revenues that come from here are from the filing of deeds. And we can see that they have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fund balance that in, in, in two thousand and twenty-two's estimated actuals. As we move over into two thousand and twenty-three, we see they have a ninety-one percent fund balance. They do have a pretty hefty fund balance moving out to. So now we're going to move into the special revenues for the Kansas City, Kansas, the city of Kansas City, Kansas. And the first one that we're going to look at is the dedicated sales tax. And this is our three A sales tax that we, citizens passed back on July first of two thousand and ten. And then it was also renewed on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty twenty. We can see that especially the revenues for two thousand and twenty-two going out were, are coming in for thirteen point seven million dollars. And total expenses went out were fifteen point four million dollars. That did still leave us with a sixty-two percent fund balance. We do have fifty employees that are paid from here, twenty-five from the police department and twenty-five from fire department. And then we also have funding that comes out for public works and also parks. So each department roughly gets about thirty-three percent of this budget. So that means like fire department gets about four, four point four million dollars and fire department gets about four point four million dollars. And between public works and parks, they all get about four point four million dollars.
The next fund is the Environmental Trust Fund. This fund was created, it authorized the, the creation of the Kansas City, Kansas Solid Waste Environmental Liability Fund for the purpose of setting aside monies in trust to finance any environmental liability arising from the collection and disposal of residential and municipal solid waste. The restricted use of this fund is it must be for an environmental cost or a liability associated with the solid waste collection and disposal. The termination of the fund in the agreement was the fund shall terminate ten years after the expiration of the term of the city solid waste contract. I just want to note in two thousand and twenty-two, I think Reggie mentioned it earlier, that the previously a portion of the solid waste funds or the solid waste contract was paid for from the general fund and a portion of it was paid from the Environmental Trust Fund. In two thousand and twenty-three, we set up a separate enterprise fund just for the, to track the revenues and expenditures of the solid waste contract. So that's why you see a decrease in, from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. Currently, the only expenses that will be in here, that are in here right now moving forward are the monitoring of the closed landfill, the Garland Park site. So we do have, right now, we have a transfer built in going forward of about two hundred and fifty thousand. But that's something we're going to review annually. That transfer would come from the solid waste enterprise fund. But if we determine that we don't need that transfer, then we would leave the funds in the solid waste fund.
Commissioner Burroughs.
Thank you. And Debbie, I appreciate that. When I start seeing a eight hundred and fifty-three percent reserve of number, that, that's quite high. But I also know that all it takes is one, one event to wipe that fund out and then some. But I do have a question for legal, at least, and I don't need an answer tonight. Is there a chance that when we start seeing funds that are generating large reserves to the extent they are, it tells us that, one, we're not doing, providing services or we're not spending the expenditures hypothetically on technology. We're waiting for the contract to come in. But is there a way for us to stop the revenue on those and spin that down and then re-implement it? Or is it something that we can, how, how would we go about addressing that? We could lower the mill on those particular funds and readjust those mills to do it. But when we see large reserves, I think we need an explanation as to why those reserves continue to grow beyond the seventeen percent, especially when they get up to nearly three digits. I don't mind having some reserves, but when we're setting on millions of dollars that should be going out into services for these particular programs, I'm just trying to see where we might be able to find some money for the budget.
Commissioner, I'm happy to look into that. It's probably something that needs a little research. Do you mean in between budget cycles, making adjustments, or do you mean?
Well, if we get to a critical point, hypothetically, if we have a, if we set the seventeen percent target as the amount of reserves, we may want to have the target raised up a little higher to twenty percent. And once it exceeds the twenty percent, that we either halt it or it goes into another account to be set off to the side. I mean, we are, we are collecting dollars that aren't being spent. And if they're not being spent this year, but they're to be spent next year on technology, which we know you need to save up for, for that, that's one thing. And we should have an explanation as to why those reserves are as large as they are. These reserves have come down considerably from what they were five years ago. But when I still see a projection of eight hundred and fifty-three percent that's possible, that tells me that either services aren't being provided or we're not spending the money as designated as need be. And we may want to look at either eliminating that mill or lowering that mill for a period of time. And we can do that during the budget cycle.
Administrator.
I just, those are the same type of questions that we asked at a meeting two days ago with our finance staff. Is if, why are we sitting on a lot of this positive, large pots of money? I mean, remember, these are taxpayers' money and they're, either we need to make sure they're kept in their pocket or we're providing services to them. So I think we're, the, the discussion that we had was very, the very questions that you asked. Are there services, service levels that we should be providing to our citizens and not? Are they saving the money for a particular reason? And, and I think what was perplexing to all of us, we didn't have answers to that. And therefore, that's part of this year's budget process is to get those types of answers, incorporate them in my final budget. And hopefully, we'll see good news either way, either where we can expand services, fine. If we can do mill relief, fine. Those are good news. But that can only be for the, where we can deal with these large reserves that we're seeing here. So we've had those discussions and you'll see how we will apply them in, in the budget process.
And I'm pleased to hear that because a few of the others, they were a little low and we were running into having to chip at the reserves and was taking us down below that seventeen percent level. And so if we have budget, during budget discussion, if we can adjust those mills to level that out a little bit, then that's what I, I feel that might be a, an opportunity for us to do. But thank you, Mr. Administrator. I do appreciate that. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And colleagues, correct me if I'm wrong. In our financial policy with fund balance, it does state if it exceeds the fund balance target, we have the ability to take that fund balance elsewhere. Am I correct?
If, if it goes to a similar type issue in most cases. In other words, if it's a technology fund is overfunded and then it has to go to technology somewhere else within our, our business acumen, do it with another agency. But yes, you're, you're correct. You're correct.
That's what I thought I remembered from reading our, the fund balance policy. So, thank you.
Currently, the fund we're looking at is a special alcohol fund. And what this fund does is provide services and programs for alcohol and drug abuse across the city. The revenues come from ten percent of gross receipts that are derived from the sale of alcohol and liquor by any club, caterer or drinking establishment within the city. Looking at two thousand and twenty-two's estimated actuals, we can see that we had six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in expenses go out. Total revenues came in with six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That left us with a sixty-four percent fund balance. And as we go out into the years, we can see that expenditures do outpace revenues each year out into two thousand and twenty-eight. So the healthy fund balance that it does have allows us to go out into the years without eating or eating all of our fund balance. But as we get out to two thousand and twenty-eight, we can see we do drop to a thirty percent fund balance. This fund does have seven employees within it.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Sorry. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Reggie to cut you off there. And Debbie, going back to the special alcohol. And this is a question for legal. There, because I've read this statute, both for the special alcohol and for the special parks and rec and where that, that revenue comes from. In the statute, it, we have a committee that's defunct at the moment. It's defunct at the moment, but by state statute, that committee is supposed to be the one to recommend a budget to the commission and then the commission approves that budget. But that committee has been defunct. So how? How have we been allocating that money when that commission or that committee is? I mean, it, that committee is made up of appointees of ourselves. We make appointments to that committee, um, we just, we just haven't. So how are we spending that money when the committee, that committee has not provided a recommendation for, uh, out special alcohol and the special parks and rec?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I will check to make sure that we haven't chartered out of that, um, requirement. But if, if we haven't, then it sounds like we do need to reconvene that. So I'll look into that.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Ramirez, with the, the special alcohol fund portion of it, that, that budget is, is run out of community corrections. And we will get to the, uh, special parks piece of it. But that, that portion is also ran out of, out of parks and rec.
This next fund is the special assets fund. Um, this fund was set up, uh, to record revenues associated with, um, the sale of significant government assets, including land and buildings. Um, we haven't had any revenues, um, in, come into this fund for the past several years. Um, the fund was set up when we had the sale of the downtown hotel. Um, and also the, the Legends, the, the theater that was at the Legends, um, the sale of both of those, the, those monies went into this fund. Um, at the time, the downtown hotel had debt issuance on it. However, the debt was not callable and at the, um, at that time, uh, the decision was made by, um, the previous commission that we would hold those funds and use those, um, um, funds if needed for a future, um, capital asset or economic development project. So right now, um, currently, we usually budget, um, although it's not shown going forward. If you look at the two thousand and twenty-two amended, there's six hundred, there's eight hundred and fifty thousand budgeted there. Usually there was a large reserve, um, as well as, um, some contractual, um, budget that was added there in the event that we would have some type of expense. Currently, the expense that's coming out of there, um, I believe is related to the stabilization fund that was set up for the downtown grocery store. Um, so that's kind of what we have running in there right now. And there may be some other miscellaneous expenses. I might, I'm not sure what, what else. Cause those, those payments were even amounts. So I'm not quite sure what's, what else is in there. I'll have to take a look at that. Um, but that is the only thing that's coming out of there. So right now, um, we have no revenues coming in. Um, and once we were to utilize all those funds, um, we wouldn't have a balance unless we had another asset that was sold and those funds were put into this fund.
Current funded, we're looking at is special parks and recreation fund, which is associated with the special alcohol fund. Where the, they both get revenues of ten percent gross receipts that are derived from the sale of alcohol within the, in the city. There are restricted uses on the revenues for both the special parks and the, uh, and the special alcohol fund. So they be, it may be expended, um, this particular one may be expended only for the purchase and establishment of maintenance or expansion of park and recreational services and programs and facilities. And looking at the financials, we can see, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, expenses that went out for six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, revenues that came in were seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So we ended up having seventy-six more, seventy-six thousand more dollars of revenue come in and expenditures that went out, which ended up leaving us with a fund balance of a hundred and seventy-three percent. Some of the things that get paid for all this fund, we do have like three employees that are paid, paid from here. We also pay for capital equipment, uh, from here and also services throughout the park and rec system.
This next fund is a special street and highway fund. Revenues, um, are from the motor fuel tax collections. Allocations are based on population. Um, there, these funds are restricted for, um, to be used for construction, reconstruction, uh, repair and maintenance of city streets and highways. Just wanted to note for, we're getting about, um, in two thousand and twenty-two, we got about seven point six million in revenues and we've got, um, from, uh, we're estimating seven million all the way out, um, to eight point two million in revenues as, as those revenues grow. Um, and we've kept, um, expenses, we are a little, the net change going out, um, for the future years is negative. Um, but we can correct that if we need to, or it, what it's simply doing is spending down the fund balance, um, in those funds. We do pay for some personnel from the street department in this fund as well as the snow removal contract and, um, street and maintenance equipment.
Thank you. Commissioner Bino.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, the special street and highway money, does it come in through the state?
Yes.
Okay. So the, so the motor fuel tax is collected and then disseminated again, like it says, by population of city and county. So this is not a tax that we levy or collect?
Right. Yeah, it comes in quarterly from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stikes.
So why would we have a fund balance at all? In that, in that collect, why, why, why? If it's something we're not collecting, we don't have, we're not going to be issuing or worried about a catastrophic event or? But yet, at the end of the day, today, right? We're looking at having three point four million dollars left in there with nowhere for this money to go.
So we, we do have four, forty-two employees that are paid from here. So we do have employees that are being paid from some, uh, fund. We do like to have, uh, a reserve there, but also we-
Three and a half million dollars?
And I also, I was going to add. Also, I was going to add that we also do projects from here also. So some years there, there, we'll, we'll have like some projects that also hit here. And one of our plans to do here is also to move our street preservation, uh, all the way into this fund. It's probably about three years ago, like right before COVID. We, we, we did have more employees here and we moved them to the city general fund in a plan to try to do more street maintenance here. So the fund balances has not always looked like this. So with us moving the people from, from this fund to the city general fund has allowed this fund to grow more.
So how are the dollars, um, allocated to the, I don't remember seeing it and, and that if, if we did, just tell me where it's at. But, um, I, this is, this is the city's forecast, right? But if you go up and you look, it says that, uh, population based on the city and county. Are dollars going out of this, um, this revenue that we're getting from the state back to the county? General fund?
So I, I believe, uh, we don't have anything going to the county general fund.
So if-
Other cities, they were, like the other cities within the county, they receive their, their own allotment from the state.
We, we, we received the city portion and then the city's portion of the county. And I would believe the county, um, the other cities would receive the same thing.
So we're not collecting any money off of Bonner Springs, Edwardsville or Lake Quavira. They're collecting their own. We're, we're only receiving our, our own, or, or I mean, I say our own, KCK's own.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
I, I will also just note, um, if you look at the expenditure budget, uh, the two thousand and twenty-two amended budget was about eight point seven. But we only, it looks like we only spent about six point nine. So there is about one point eight million there. Um, and I'm not sure what that's related to, but, and we can look into that. Um, but that also did, uh, contribute to some of the increase in the fund balance.
I, I, I'll just make one more short comment. Uh, so last year, I think a city mill was equivalent to one-six roughly, right? If I'm not mistaken, so times two, there is about three point two. There's two mill reduction that we held, that we could have passed to our, to our citizens for tax relief instead of that whole setting in a bank account. Right?
Well, we would have to, if you're, if you lower to, there, if you lowered, if you're saying lowering two mills within the city general fund, um, you would, the, if you were going to shift costs here, it would have to be related to street maintenance. So you'd either have to move street employees that are being paid out of the general fund back into here. Or if there's any street expenses in the city general fund, those could be moved here.
Okay. So I guess I'm a little confused because we have a surplus of money of three point five million dollars. Right? Those, those employees that you're talking about were still getting paid. And we still, I'm not talking about moving anybody. And we still had three point five million dollars that we did not spend last year.
This mill, there's, there's no tax levy in this fund.
Okay.
So the tax levy, you would have, you would reduce, reducing two mills in the city would not, the city general fund would not affect this fund. But you're suggesting that if we had done that, we could have shifted costs to this fund.
Correct.
Yes, we could have done that, but they would have had to have been cost related to street maintenance.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Stikes just kept asking questions until I finally decided to jump on there. Um, so why couldn't we move the, the, the cost for employees back from the general fund to this fund for those specific employees? Uh, as a means of reconciling the structural deficit that we have in the general fund? Does that make sense?
We, we could do that. We could, we could move more personnel back into, to this fund. Cause we have, over the course of several years, moved, um, personnel out of here because, um, you know, to try to free up additional money for street maintenance. But if you move additional personnel into here, then that reduces the amount you will be able to use for street maintenance, actual in, infrastructure.
But you can play it either way though, because the Fisher might say, well, I want to use this extra money next year or over the next quarter, you know? And, and so has that discussion been had with his department, with public works?
We, we-
Via the, the discussion of moving the employees over to this area?
We can have additional discussions. We've had those discussions before, which is partly why we've been trying to move personnel out of this fund to allow them to spend this money on capital infrastructure. So this would reverse, that would reverse some of what we've done over the past several years.
I don't have recommendation one way or the other, but we have a pot of money here that can be used one way or the other. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Administrator.
I think these questions are, are very interesting because we can make trade-offs. But when you're talking about a pot of money that is specifically collected to address only infrastructure issues, when I see a balance of two million dollars or three million dollars, that's not much because public work projects, if we have to do an emergency, it's nice to have that in that state. So you don't want to zero it out as much, but maybe there is some adjustment that you could, could use. So it's, it's, we have some flexibility, but I, um, just because you see three point four million dollars, remember in public works projects, those are expensive. And it has its own inflation rate of about fifteen to twenty percent per year now. So the buying power of this gets less. Uh, but yes, I understand what you're saying. There is flexibility that we could use within the budget.
Burrows.
I would just state that the gas tax is, uh, being affected by the, uh, continued growth of electric vehicles. And you're sensing it on your highway plan and for the state of Kansas. So those revenues will eventually shrink more statewide than they have as of late. But with proliferation of more fuel efficient vehicles and electrical vehicles, you're going to see the gas tax and the revenue stream shrink statewide. So I don't know what kind of revenue we'll be receiving, you know, five to 10 years from now.
Commissioner Kane.
I don't want to take any money away from public works. I wish Fisher wasn't here. But I've got two roads that are out. You know, and it would be quite, I would love to see us spend that money to fix those. And I don't want to take money where it's not needed, but I'd sure like to spend it where we could fix it. Isn't that right, Mr. Fisher? I can't hear you. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. Um, I guess in listening to the conversation, we're talking about three point four million in the black here. That's a drop in the bucket. When I go back to the conversation, was it three on threes? We had a couple of weeks ago, they talked about infrastructure and we need to be adding, what, about six million dollars? Each year to public works for, for street and highway. I don't want to get things mixed up, but overall, that's what I'm thinking. This is nothing. We don't have extra money. We need about six million dollars annually just to stay at the same level we are in terms of road improvement. And our constituents have said they want better. So I just want to make sure I'm following this conversation. We don't have extra money anywhere. So, thank you.
Uh, current fund we're looking at is a tourism and convention fund. Revenues we're here come from our hotel and motel transactions. And there's restricted use of revenues for promotion and conventions and tourism within the city of Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, we do have one point three oh million dollars annually that goes out for visit KCK, um, from this budget. And the budget does have like three FTEs in it. Um, so two thousand and twenty-two actuals, uh, we had three point four million dollars that went out. We have four point one million dollars that came in in revenues for a fund balance of three point seven million dollars. As we move into two thousand and twenty-three, we can see we're planning, uh, a four point eight million dollars going out and four point three million dollars that come in. Uh, we did early this year have a transaction where we were paying for, um, bridge, bridge raise for the Rock Island Bridge that is coming out of here this year. But we can see, uh, going into two thousand and twenty-four and out to two thousand and twenty-eight, we do have a really stable fund balance. Going out into those years where, um, two thousand and twenty-four, we're estimating a three point nine million dollar fund balance. And then going out to two thousand and twenty-eight, uh, that fund balance grows to almost six and a half million dollars.
Commissioner Stikes.
At what percentage of, of growth do you show that? Is that, uh, is pretty conservative or is it pretty aggressive?
We, we do for, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, we did adjust to a, a, a three percent, uh, sales tax increase. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, we have like the, almost a three percent increase. And then going out two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-eight, there's a two percent.
Two?
Yes.
Okay.
Each year. And so one of the reasons we did that, a- again, uh, just looking at what we're hearing about the economy as far as, uh, there are some layoffs in the area. Uh, certain retail services have, have noticed those start falling off. So that's where we came up with those estimates.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, may or may not know this answer. Do we know how many hotels and motels in general that we have within the city?
Uh, we do have that information. I do not know it off the top of my head.
Okay.
We do have that information and we can get it.
Okay, thank you. I was asking because we have to think, you know, we're talking tourism and I know you're giving your, your, uh, the growth. But, you know, two, two years, two thousand and twenty-six, we're going to have a big event right next door to our city. They, they're not going to have all the hotels and motels to house everybody. It's the World Cup. And so people are going to come over here to our side of town and come to our hotels and motels and book, which is going to increase the revenue coming in. So, um, have we thought about that when, I know it's kind of very, very hard to figure that in at the moment, but, um, is that something that's been thought of? Or that's, the conversation is had?
We've had that conversation. We've had that conversation, but I think one of the things we caution when we talk about that, that's going to be a one time.
Yeah.
Um, and therefore we will take that. Any increase because of that event is gravy. It's hard to say what it's going to be, but we really don't want to have that be regular income. Uh, because of that fact. So it's better to be conservative on current trends and, and then, hey, that's a great year. We have, let's do something special with that extra money.
And, and I agree with that. Thank you. I, I do agree. That's, that is going to be a one time infusion. That's going to be on our sales tax, on what have you.
Everything, yeah.
On everything that we, that's within the city and county. Um, so no, I agree with that and thank you.
Commissioner Kane.
Can we have Fisher come up and give a three minute talk about where he's at with his stuff?
What specifically, what, what were you looking for?
Just see where he's at with some of his projects.
Or it's not now.
I, I think, I think I'll, what I'll do for you, Commissioner, I'll set up a, a, a special session just on infrastructure and public works.
Perfect.
Administrator, and we can have that as part of the bu- bu- budget process.
Thank you.
Administrator, uh.
We are going to have a session on CIMP.
Yeah, so, uh, Commissioner Kane, did you pick up on that? Administrator's already saying he's already got a C M I P. Uh, special session that he's going to work with me on planned already, so.
That, that'll be June fifteenth.
June fifteenth, alright, alright. Commissioner Markley.
I just want to make a suggestion for that little one time bump. Um, as some of you know, I'm chairing the mayor's arts committee. That committee is looking to start an arts commission or to restart an arts commission. We had one many, many, many years ago here in the county. I think it would be nice to use that extra random bump, um, as some seed money for them to get that commission started. So. You'll probably hear from me again on that, but it would be nice because it wouldn't be out of the amount that we are expecting to get so much as utilization of additional funds that are coming in.
You know, amount on the seed money that might be needed?
I don't, but, um, we're working on it. That's, that's the discussion right now is what does that look like and, and what do we think would be needed?
He's planting seeds, so let's respect that.
That's right.
Next.
Commissioner Markley, just if you want to bring up, you brought that up. I believe you're going to want a resolution or an ordinance to solidify that. What, what's that looking like? So, uh, is that going to be in his budget cycle or?
Well, good question. So we're, we're in discussions right now about what that entity looks like and what sort of the makeup of that is. Um, so we haven't settled on anything yet. What I anticipate is that at least initially this organization is going to need some sort of administrative support and grant related support. And so we're talking to, Arts KC about whether they have a role in sort of acting as a contract agency to bump us along until we can, build a commission that is robust enough to sort of stand alone. Um, so it could be that what the seed money does is pay Arts KC to be our admin and, and apply for grants on our behalf until we are big enough to, apply for grants on our own. So that's kind of what I think we're starting to see come together, but we haven't settled on anything yet. And I don't know that we're going to come to a complete conclusion by this. By the budget season, but we're going to try to.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of the World Cup, if you all recall, the state is allocating funding. I was talking with, with Commissioner Stikes about this. Um, for the purpose of sporting KC and the fact that we are going to be hosting at least practices or something of that sort. I think it would behoove us to have some conversations with the lieutenant governor and the secretary of commerce on where those millions of dollars are going to go. Because Wyandotte County will absolutely have to bear the cost when we have those massive events. I'm thinking about our infrastructure. I'm thinking about public safety, um, and what it's going to require of that. And so, um, as we are having those particular conversations, I think we should definitely think about, uh, what type of investment, um, the state is willing to make as well. Thank you.
Administrator, can you bring the commission and maybe the public up to, uh, where we're at, uh, and your assignment to that, uh, metro committee?
Yes, there's a, um, a, uh, committee that was named, uh, uh, to really lead the efforts of the region's response to support the World Cup in twenty twenty-six. Um, I am Wyandotte County, uh, representative and our other Kentucky, uh, representative is Senator, or sorry, ru- wrong K state. Um, um, it's, 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 Senator Stikes from Northern Johnson County is the governor. Governor's, um, appointee on that committee as well. And, uh, that committee is charged, uh, to guide the efforts and support efforts of that massive, uh, tourism event. Uh, for, uh, for us, and I think we're geared to have two waves of soccer, first preliminary round and a quarter round. So having two waves of that, uh, is going to be a boon. Part of that discussion is with, that the committee will be discussing with both governors' offices. As each state is allocating money, fifty million from Missouri, ten million from Kansas. And how will that be played out in the support for the, uh, for the, uh, World Cup? Since we're going to be on the national stage, we have to be up to par for that challenge. And so that's just one focus area that this committee is charged to, uh, program, utilize however. Um, the, uh, state legislature and the governors have earmarked it. So we'll be hearing more and more of that as it gets to find out of the state house. And, uh, that's, that's a windfall for us.
Next one we're going to look at is the Wyandotte County nine.
Commissioner McCarron, I'm sorry.
And we can come back to this in a minute, but would I be wrong to say that, the high majority of the services we provide, city and county, come through our general funds? But if we talk about the services that the citizens broadly receive from the unified government, they are, paid for through our three city, county and parks general funds. Would that be roughly correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct, so.
And so I want to come back to that in a minute because these are, these are not trivial. These are concrete beneficial funds. But most of these are not mill levy, I mean, not general mill levy. They are special mill levy or special revenue or, uh, enterprise. And so I'm going to come back to something in a minute, if I, if I could, about, um, our consolidated general funds. And how those look irrespective of these, not to trivialize these because they're there. But as I'm looking at the consolidated general funds for the next couple of years. We talk about we have a three million dollar balance in one of these funds. It doesn't even begin to make up the deficit that would exist in those other funds. And once we use those funds one time, they're gone. They're not recurring. So if I could just ask, I want to come back to the consolidated general funds in a minute. Thank you.
So current fund that we're looking at is the Wyandotte County nine one one fund. Uh, revenue for this fund comes from fifty-three, uh, cent per month per subscriber account. For telephones, uh, landlines, hardware and wireless and voice over internet protocol telephones. So that revenue goes into this fund and it produces, or in twenty twenty-two, it produced nine hundred seventy thousand dollars of revenues. We had eight hundred and one thousand dollars of expenses to go out. Um, the expenses have to be used on our nine one one. Call center. And maintenance and licensing fees for nine one one equipment, purchase of nine one one equipment and upgrades. So this fund is specifically used for our dispatch center and nine one one. Upgrades and just keeping that dispatch center running. We can see, um, fund balance there, uh, for twenty twenty-two, we ended up like with fifty percent fund balance. Uh, moving into twenty twenty-three, we're expecting a seventy percent fund balance. As we get out to twenty twenty-eight, uh, we do have like a ninety percent fund balance. And this, this is called Wyandotte County nine one one fund, but it is a, a city general or not a city general fund, but a city fund. And. Next, we're going to jump into our enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are funds that are self-sufficient. Uh, they bring in revenues, uh, for charges that they, um, charge to, um, citizens and businesses within, um, within the city. Uh, so the first one we're going to look at is the emergency medical services fund, uh, and basically what this is, is for the fire, fire department. Uh, they begin, they started providing, uh, emergency medical services back on July first of two thousand and four. Uh, the source of revenues are a one fourth cent sales tax, uh, which was passed by voters, uh, on June eighth in two thousand and four. They also get revenue from insurance, Medicare, Medicaid and individual user payments. This fund has forty-seven employees in it. The whole E, EMS, emergency medical service, um, division has eighty-three employees in it. Uh, thirty-six of those employees are paid from the city general fund. And we can see in twenty twenty-two, revenues that we had come in were thirteen point four million. Uh, expenses were fourteen point one million. See, we have a fund balance of one million dollars. And, uh, and, uh, one of the things that we did have to do, uh, with this fund, we did have to move out, some personnel expenses into the city general fund in twenty twenty-two. Uh, because personnel ended up going on, being more than we thought it was going to be. Uh, we can look at this fund where revenues, um, going out each year are not growing as fast as, as expenditures. Uh, and we could see where, um, fund, fund balance, by the time we get out to twenty twenty-eight, does drop to ten percent. So the portion of, uh, EMS as a whole outside of, uh, this fund. You have like twelve million dollars of it that is paid from this fund. We also got four point one million dollars that is also paid from the city general fund.
Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you. Um, this, on this EMS fund, the quarter cent sales tax. Is it held within the fire department's budget?
It is. It is, uh, it goes into this fund. Um, and so it is, it is specifically for the fire.
So I guess what I'm trying to ask is it pays EMS, EMT, paramedics and ambulances and medical equipment, things like that.
Yes.
In other words, it's not co-mingled into fire suppression?
No.
And is it, when we see, for example, the budget of the fire department? Is this money in that budget?
Yes, it, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a, there's a division within the fire department called EMS and the, the funding goes to help fund that department.
Um, this next enterprise fund is the Legend Stadium. Um, this fund was created, um, when the, um, uh, for revenues and expenses, expenditures associated with the baseball stadium. In twenty fourteen, uh, the unified government purchased the stadium with the issuance of star bonds that were then paid off in twenty sixteen. Um, so this fund was, when, when those bonds paid off, we received the capital reserve that was remaining, um, in that fund. And so this, those funds have been used. Um, and now we are in an agreement with the KC Monarchs Baseball Club. We do have a management agreement with them. And currently the expenses, the revenues and expenses in here are going to cover those costs. Um, we pay cap, but we, in, within the management agreement, we've committed to paying two hundred and fifty thousand per year for capital improvements at the stadium. Um, we also pay the insurance on the stadium as well as other maintenance charges, um, with being in the Village West area. Um, so the transfer that we have coming in here is from the, uh, tourism fund and it goes in to fund, um, uh, those additional costs that we have, uh, set aside to pay, uh, for owning the stadium. So that's what's coming in here. We'll, we're prob- we'll be reviewing this annual transfer each year, um, to determine how much, uh, we need for current operating expenses. Next fund is the public levy enterprise fund. Um, this fund was set up, uh, primarily for the operation of the public levy facility that was in the Fairfax district. In twenty fourteen, a new development came in, um, and, uh, the existing buildings were demolished and a new development went up in its place. Uh, there was still, uh, debt issued on one of the buildings that was not able to be paid. Um, so the current source of revenue comes from the rent, uh, rent and management leases, uh, to the new development that are going to pay operating costs as well as the debt service expenditures. So that's what you see. Um, the revenue is the lease and management, um, payments and then the expenses are the debt service, um, as well as some other, I think there's some other operating expenses that are included in here.
Commissioner Burf.
Uh, so Debbie, w- with that, I noticed that we're still taking money out of reserves to make up for the shortfall. Do we know if it's because they're not renting all the units out because rent has gone up in most of these commercial facilities? And so I'm just curious as to why we're still having to supplement it out of reserves. I mean, that's the only question I have as to what may be causing, either they're not charging enough for the rent or we have vacancies down there that's impacting the amount of revenue.
We, we have contracts for the, for the two development agreements. Um, so the, that, those revenues are fixed and they come in every year. They're, they're set to pay a certain amount every year. I believe it's through, um, it's either twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, um, and I probably need to look at that. Um, because I believe that's when the debt expires, um, and those ma- those leases for the development were set to cover, um, the debt that was still outstanding. So as far as twenty, twenty twenty-two, I'm not sure, um, what led to that, um, that we, because I know we have some operating charges in there. I think we pay, um, we have some storage, I think that's paid out of there. So maybe that cost, uh, increased and we didn't get it put into the budget, but, um, we should, yeah, we should be able to budget and cover those costs within there. The fund balance stays pretty, you know, around the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range each year. Next fund is the sewer system enterprise fund. Uh, the, uh, sewer rates, uh, fund the expenses of the water pollution control division. Um, all revenues fund the operations, maintenance and debt service, um, of sewer operations. As you can see, um, this fund, um, it has a, a pretty good fund balance, um, in twenty twenty-two estimated. And even through twenty twenty-three, starting in twenty twenty-four, we do start eating up the fund balance. Um, so we probably, to get that into balance, we just need to look at, uh, the expenditures, um, that are sitting there. We may need to reduce those to get, because we do want to keep, since this one does pay for salaries, we do want to keep a, um, reserve within there, um, to cover if there's overtime or any, any charges like that. Um, the fees do have, um, increases built in each year and that's related to the consent decree that was, um, entered into several years ago. Um, and that helps to fund the debt that's issued for the consent decree. Um, and as I mentioned, when I talked about the debt service fund, uh, this is one of the funds that does pay into the debt service fund for, uh, its, uh, debt that's issued. Next one is the solid waste enterprise fund. Um, this is the one that was newly established in twenty twenty-three. Um, it's to, uh, uh, track, uh, the fees collected for residential garbage and recycling services and make it easy of, easy to track, uh, the services that are being spent. Um, so that's why you don't see anything in twenty twenty-two because previously these charges were in the general fund and in the, um, um, in, in environmental trust fund. So currently, as you can see, we do have this fund in balance. Um, and it, the rates will be reviewed each year. To look at, you know, what expenses, because the contract, the trash contract has a CPI increase, um, set to, uh, for each year. So, uh, depending on how much that varies, um, we'll have to look at the rates each year to determine if the, um, rates collected are covering the trash. to determine if the rates collected are covering the trash contract. Next one is the Stormwater Utility Fund. This is for all the maintenance and capital improvements and debt service of the stormwater system. I'll just note, in 2022, fees were approved in 2021. The fees for 2022, we were charging a single rate for all users. But in 2022, that fee increased with a separate rate for residential and non-residential customers. And then last year in 2022, a new fee structure was approved to be effective in 2024 using the impervious surface instead of the flat fee that was previously used. So, and we have built in those projections going forward for this fund. Probably need to look to see if future debt service expenses are built in. Not sure if those are built into the fund yet, but we'll be reviewing that.
Our last fund is our Sunflower Heroes Golf Course. Revenue here is generated from the use of the golf course by the public and related expenses for operation of the golf course. We can see in 2022, actuals that revenues that ended up coming in were one point one million dollars. We end up have total expenses going out of one million dollars, so left us with like sixty-seven thousand dollars more revenue coming in and expenses going out. Fund balance ended up being almost four hundred thousand dollars. As we move over into 2023, we are estimating to spend a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars into fund balance here. But as we go out from 2024 to 2028, the fund balance does stay pretty stable within this fund. Some things that are also being paid out of this fund are for FTEs, and then also capital that is being spent out of this fund also. And that is our last fund that we wanted to cover with you all tonight.
Yes, Commissioner Bynum, then Commissioner McCurnan, and then Commissioner Ramirez in that order.
Thanks, Mayor. I have some questions. Mayor, before I ask my questions, you know, I learned ask not, receive not. And so with that, I'm going to ask again, and I'm going to keep asking our commission to consider the elimination of the pilot or the target population we brought to you last week. Going to ask it next week and the week after that also.
With that said.
Sorry.
Administration and staff, if you would, I guess for our next round, based on the information you've gotten from Commissioner Bynum's work in working with her, can you present those projections to this full commission for debate and consideration? As part of the budget conversation, so that issue can be addressed.
Thank you.
On behalf of.
And we brought, first of all, Mayor, they did all the work. You know, it can be in the committee, but they did all the work. And we have some rough ideas. But, you know, given kind of some of what we're seeing here, I'm just putting it in the universe again that I would like to ask for that relief for that target population. But the questions that I'm having tonight are around your special funds. But in the beginning, you went to the tax levy funds, aging, mental health, et cetera. So I want to make sure I understand, multiple times, Reggie, as you walked us through those funds, you said we could provide more services or we could shift the mill levy rate. So a couple of things, if we have a conversation about going revenue neutral on just the county side of the budget, it's all a hypothetical conversation. That would not necessarily change these rates, right? We could change these rates. Am I correct? These are all some portion of a mill that's funding these special tax levies at the dollar amounts that they're generating. Go ahead.
Commissioner Markle.
I'm speaking of the tax levy funds specifically right now, aging. And we can adjust those up and down at our discretion. Am I right about that?
Yes, you can move, so on the, there's eight levy funds on the county side. So and you can, without even changing it, you could shift from, you know, one of the levies to the General Fund or vice versa, and without even changing the levy. Now, if you're talking about going revenue neutral, that would probably reduce the total county levy. And then you probably would have to reduce.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at, I guess. Because to go county, to go revenue neutral on just the county side of the budget, last week, that presentation was thirty-seven point three-two-eight mils down to thirty-one point seven-four-three. Now, it looks to me like within some of these fund balances on these tax levy units on the county side, we might have room. And Brian makes a good point, because if you do that, if you go from thirty-seven point three to thirty-one point seven, then that's next year and the year after that and the year after that. So over here, when we look at the levy funds, I'm just wondering if we don't go revenue neutral, and again, I'm just talking about the county side, we could still make adjustments in these rates that could even potentially still produce more revenue, just not as much as what's currently being produced. I'm not trying to like scaring any department. This is a part of why I was asking last week for this kind of deep dive. This is the beginning to me of the deep dive that we're asking you for, because we want to bring mill levy relief. And, you know, if we can bring that in the form of revenue neutral, fine. But we, again, we must know where those expenditures will not occur. And some of it could be in very small increments of these tax levy funds. And I just want to make sure I'm speaking correctly.
When we.
If I'm not, I need to be explained.
Well, I think when we presented both the pilot option last week and the revenue neutrality, each of those would reduce the amount, well, would reduce the revenue pool for the county and our general funds, in essence. The magnitude to, when you look at the adjustments, and maybe you'd be talking to the levy funds, to the magnitude of the impact to the general funds, it's not going to be covering that magnitude. So that's one thing to keep in mind, that it's not the elixir that I think everybody would like it to be. But it's one of the options that we're going to be looking for. I mean, we're doing the deep dive at the staff level. We'll be explaining those to you. And I'm going to say, like I said at the end of that meeting, it's going to be a tough budget process. And maybe that's a segue into Commissioner McCurnan's desire to speak about the general funds.
We okay? So, thank you, Mr. Johnston.
Took the mayor's thunder, but I just, whatever.
The 2024, 2025, and 2026, so your forecasts up here are based on the model that you presented, the assumptions in the model. Pilot revenue shows up in City General Fund income, correct? So when we talk pilot, we're talking City General Fund, not county, not parks consolidated, not special revenue, not bond and interest, City General Fund. Okay. At its core, a local government is basically a service organization. And for a lot of service organizations, it's pretty safe to say that about seventy-five percent of the total expense is personnel. Would you say that it's safe to say that seventy-five percent of our expense in our three general funds ends up being personnel, or is that overestimating that?
No, that's about what it is.
About what it is. So in 2024, out of the two hundred and fifty-five million dollars of combined general funds, a hundred ninety-one million of that will be personnel. I don't see any way out of this without cutting personnel. Paper clips and pickup trucks are not going to balance this budget. So I think we need to confront that, that if we're even thinking about revenue reductions, we have to think about what jobs will not be funded and filled. What services will not be provided? Because right now, as I look just at the general funds, we have a deficit of ten point five million dollars in '24, a deficit of nine point nine in '25, and a deficit of twenty-two point nine in '26. And that's if I add together City, County, and Parks. I don't see any way that paper clips and pickup trucks is going to balance that budget and erase those deficits. So I think that's something we, as a commission, need to confront, that as we talk about making big changes, big shifts to balance this budget, it's going to have to come, tell me if I'm wrong, I hope I am, but there's going to have to be some personnel shift. Would that be correct?
That is definitely correct, and mostly in the City General Fund.
And so I think one of the things that we, as a commission, need to consider is what services currently being provided, what services that citizens are currently asking for increased levels of, would we need to trim and cut back in order to achieve the personnel savings necessary to balance the budget? So I'm just going to throw that out there, that I think that's something we are going to need to confront one way or the other. Commissioner, before you move on, the administrator is going to chime in on that.
Appreciate the reminder of that. I think that's a reality that we, at the staff side of the table, are realizing too. I think for the first time, even internal staff are seeing the same numbers that you are. And we have to do this readjustment, and it's going to be a few years' process to get us back to a more stable environment. As I said last time, this did not happen over the last couple of years. It's decades in the making. But now, we're at a point where fiscal discipline has to be king and our focus. And that means looking at personnel, looking at ways, how we do business, how we use debt to fund our things. Now, it's also going to be a reality in discussions with you, because over the last couple of years, you have given staff priorities that you have expectations, like twenty-five percent increase every year on infrastructure. I'm going to tell you right now, that's not going to happen. And that's a reality. It's an ideal, but we're not going to be able to deal with it with our current situation. I'll say it that bluntly. So that's going to have to be an expectation that's reduced. There's got to be an expectation to community stakeholders that they can't come to the UG like they used to in the past to get the support that they want. That's got to be a hard fact to talk about, our partners who we rely on to provide services. And so, I mean, it's going to be a challenge. And the fact that you overtly saying, hey, we got to face the elephant in the room, we're going to do that. And I envision that once I present to you my work, and then leave it to you to beat yourselves up over, you're going to have to confront individual priorities with fiscal realities that we can't continue to pay. And what you had here today is step one in the budget process. Get an understanding of where all our revenue comes in for both budgets and the other budgets that we have. But you also, there was one thing I wanted all of you to realize. Some of the comments that our two financial professionals mentioned, in a lot of these funds, we have employees embedded in them. And that usually is a game that those of us in large budget processes, we took them out of the General Fund because we had pressures on the General Fund. And so I'm at a point where I don't know how much I have that latitude in our budget processes. But we've shifted a lot. And across the country, why you've established levy funds is you wanted to keep your General Fund levy below. If you look at some of those levy funds, those are typical services that you would find governments providing anyway. But to show that your General Fund is lower, you created a special levy fund and took that out of it. And so, you know, it's a public sector tool, that then you can say, well, no, I maintain the General Fund, but you increased the special levy on the outside of the fund. So there are these mechanisms that have evolved over the years that we've used in the history of the UG, but it's used everywhere. I mean, the joke in Illinois is it has the most taxing districts in the country because they wanted to keep county and city general funds low, so they created park districts. They created forest districts. They created drainage districts. They created mosquito abatement districts, all receiving a tax levy away from what normally used to be in it. So again, telling the citizen voter, we've kept the General Fund down, but they never talk about how we did it. So just understand that these are things that have happened over time, and we have to deal with it maybe more dramatically on the front end, but it's going to be a multi-year process.
Just two second note, I know the three of us at least, oh, he's not even over there, he ran off. Remember, when we first came on, we were paying back some funds that we borrowed from. So we don't want to be doing that again. I would just make that side note. It's not fun to have to pay yourself back because you took money out of a fund you shouldn't have. So something to keep in mind.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I, this has been listening, I think, kind of a few thoughts, right? Administrator, just to consider, I would like to know the vacancy rate of our employees. We have seen a large, large number exit the Unified Government. What is the percentage? What are we at right now? I'd also like to know what is the funding that goes with that? So with the exit of so many of our employees, what is the carryover, right? Funding that goes with that, had they not left the Unified Government? We, I think, have made it clear that whether it's local ordinances, resolutions, or funds that are state statute-generated, that we may not be following some of them. And so I would recommend maybe either looking into a contractor or someone to do the work of going through these state funds or going through some of these resolutions and seeing if we are abiding by these funds and their purposes. The last thing I would say is I do agree, we do need to revisit the conversation on our reserves. With that deficit in mind, on the city side, there's just no way I can justify taking away revenue via revenue neutral or tax relief. Until we change that number for expenses, it's just for us to deliver services to our city. It, it's just for us to deliver services to our citizens at the bare minimum, it just doesn't make sense. But perhaps we can find some cost savings that can be returned to the general fund so that we are not in as large of a ongoing deficit as we see right before us on the city side. The last thing I'll say is, colleagues, if you recall, our previous administrator had suggested a mid-year budget adjustment, which would give us the opportunity to look at, you know, midway through the budget, where we are at and whether or not we want to continue on that road or whether or not we want to adjust. I also know there's been conversations on a two-year budget. I would just recommend that we consider all of those options so that we can have a heavy pulse on, a nice pulse on what's happening with our finances. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Burroughs.
Thank you. Colleagues, we had the discussion last week in reference to the revenue neutral rate. And it, it's quite obvious from last year's budget discussion and this year's budget discussion, revenue neutral rate was off the table. We have been mandated to do that by law to have that discussion. And if we're not going to do the revenue neutral, then we have to come public as to why we're, we're not. But what revenue neutral discussion forced us to do was give us the opportunity to look at this budget to the extent that we are. And this is something that I'm looking forward to. I'm working with staff and since I've been here in the five years, we haven't had this thorough of a discussion by funds and had the debate and the discussion that we've had tonight. So there, there's promise here that now we're really, really drilling down to the budget. None of us want to see people lose jobs. None of us want to see a cut in services. However, we do have a responsibility to be efficient and effective and fiscally sound in our economy known as our, our government. And this is what this revenue neutral discussion forced, has kind of forced us to do. And so I, I really appreciate the discussion staff. Thank you for the work that, and the conversation. And I appreciated the little conversations we had last night, Reggie, and in Bonner Springs and Edoville that Chuck Stites and I attended in reference, in reference to what we're hearing from other communities. But I, I stand ready to do my part. And I know we're going to have differences of agreement, but the bottom line is we're elected to do this and, and I'm excited that now we're, we're beginning to really, really do it. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, good discussion. Any more questions from our commissioners? Thank you, staff, for that presentation. I agree with Commissioner Burrows, a really robust conversation that needs to be had as we continue to deep dive into this budget process to hopefully get to where the residents expect us to be. We do have a seven o'clock commission meeting. Staff has indicated they're going to need about fifteen minutes or so, maybe a little bit more to set up. So we're going to push that seven o'clock and I apologize on behalf of the Unified Government Commission, just because of the importance of this meeting, we're going to have to push the seven o'clock back to about seven fifteen. So we will reconvene for our normal full commission meeting at seven fifteen in the, in the commission chambers. But as such, I will adjourn this special session. Do I have a motion?
Barclay, move to adjourn.
I have a motion in a second. Clerk roll call, please.
Roll call. Ramirez.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
King. Barclay.
Aye.
States.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum. Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McCurnan.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you. We will reconvene for full commission meeting at seven fifteen.